I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to start with our exemplary people and John Batista is going to introduce.
Sure.
Come on up.
If you remember, a few meetings ago, I talked about our curriculum mapping initiative that we were doing in the district and we were ready to launch it and we have launched it out. But it really is something that's been evolving over very, I would say, last 10 years. And we had purchased a piece of software, it cost about eighty-five hundred dollars a year, to do our curriculum mapping. It never really did what we wanted it to do. A few years ago, Lisa approached me and said, you know, I think we can use Google Docs, which is free, to do exactly what we're doing now and even better because we can customize it to what we really want it to be. So with that, Lisa did that and she spent a lot of time, Lisa is the secondary instructional leader for world language, so she does have her day job, but she spent a lot of time putting this together. So really, she saved the district some money, she has really allowed us to customize a piece of software. And today, we had visitors coming to Massey because Massey School of Distinction grant and they came from another district to look at what we're doing and they were really impressed with this part of it and they say we got to share with them. So I want to introduce Lisa as our exemplary person, but she just wants to take a few seconds to show you a little bit about all the work that she's done. Thanks, Lisa.
I think you, John showed you how to access it from the website, but I'll walk you through one other time. This is an instance where technology actually served as the tool it was intended to be. We knew what we wanted things to look like, we were able to design it and use it. And it's a living document, teachers are using it regularly and it doesn't cost us anything. So if you go to our district website and you go to department's curriculum, it's the first link. And what this is, is really a very large number of links of Google Docs. It's every grade, every course we offer, every unit in it. And I'll just show you an example from the high school. You can click on English. Pick the high school, I'm going to go to World Lit, it's the grade 10 course. And all of this, so far, every single thing you see is viewable to the public, anybody can access that. And then every unit, every course has the description from the program of studies, what the credit weight is, what the grade is, and every unit that is taught in that course. I'll click on Unit 2 Latin America. And anybody who clicks here can see what our standards are. Connecticut Core Standards as well. What the content of the unit is in concepts and the skills that we'll ask students to demonstrate and to work on is there. And then either the Bloom's Taxonomy Level or the Depths of Knowledge, depending, is listed as well. The essential questions for that unit, resources, and sometimes depending on the course, this will also include websites. And then academic vocabulary. This is not viewable to the public, but this is the teacher piece for every single unit, there's also a faculty page. And I'll be able to show this to you because I'm logged in, but I think I can show it to you. There we go. What teachers can do also is upload any assessments that they may have and share resources. This is a folder with everything for teaching the Latin America unit in grade 10. And teachers can access it and add as they develop new materials and delete as we don't use materials. It's wonderful, even at the elementary schools with three buildings, everybody's got access to the exact same information and materials.
So this is going out, this will go out again to the parents, let them know that they can look at this. Our staff knows that it's up and running and they've been using it, they've been using it behind the scenes probably for the last year as Lisa has worked with each group of teachers to put this up. But this really shows, this shows that our curriculum is a living document, that teachers actually use that, that if a student in ninth grade takes this course, no matter what teacher he or she has, they'll have the same, at least the same assured experience for that unit as everyone else. So that the next teacher who gets them will be able to talk about it. So, you know, again, I want to thank Lisa and I know that Jim has thanked her also for all the work that she's done with this. Not only did it save the district money, but it really is a better product. So again, thank you for being our exemplary person.
So we want to celebrate Lisa as our exemplary person tonight. Lisa, if you'd join us over to the side, we can get a picture for Facebook.
Yep, coming.
What I'd like to say before we end this, there's really, leadership comes really in two forms. There's something that people exert, they call it position power. And that's because of the position you could have authority and make things happen just because you are the person, okay? There's another type of leadership and it's called expert power. And that's when you know more than anybody else in the room and people listen to you because of it. Lisa has always been exhibiting expert power in everything that she does here. This is no minor task that she took on. She didn't do it, you know, to make more money because that wasn't the case. She didn't do it for the stature it was going to bring her. She did it because it was the right thing in her mind to do, to help the district save some money and have a document and a place, a repository for curriculum documents that actually helps people to understand the curriculum. So Lisa, without you, I don't know where we'd be.
Thank you.
Moving on to Report of the Chairman, the only thing I have tonight is to say about tomorrow's vote. Please, 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 everybody who's watching, get out and vote tomorrow on the Turf Fields Project. I'm sure Jim will mention this later on. Voting is 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Senior Center tomorrow. That's all I have there. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve this consent agenda? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, excuse me. Do I have any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons and we will start with our Massey Board Representatives.
Hello, everyone. Last week, the senior class had the Yellow Dress Assembly, which was a one-one play about dating violence. It was overall an informative play and I thought it was a great experience for all of the seniors to watch. Also, Ring Dance is this Friday, the 11th, for Massey sophomores. And this Saturday is the Pi Day 5K, which is a 5K throughout Monroe. The 5K raises money for a scholarship in the name of Mrs. Cool and it raises money for a, the scholarship is for a senior student who will be going into a field that involves mathematics. Oh, it's Sunday. That's why I meant on Pi Day, March 14th. At the day before, March 13th, sorry.
This last Friday, the Boys Swim Team hosted the Southwest Conference Championships in which all the schools from the Southwest Conference participated. Everything went smoothly. This coming Saturday, we are going to have the Class M Trials here at Massey at 3:30, so be there. This coming Wednesday, the Massey students will have an advisory about the capstone. While the Wednesday after, there will be a school-wide assembly on the dangers of e-cigarettes.
We, over the weekend, we had the Robotics Southern New England Regional Championships. All of the different Massey teams from eighth to F all came there and we all competed among about 84 teams from all over New England. And of those, two teams, Massey C and Massey F, both qualified to go to the World Championship, which will be in Louisville in April, right after spring break. We're also going to be having the Prom Fashion Show on March 16th at 7:30 PM. The Fashion Show is a major fundraiser for the, for post-prom, which is a great thing that kids here at Massey have to have something to do after prom and that helps prevent drinking and alcohol and different issues that happen in post-prom and like after-parties and things like that. So it's a great way to fundraise for something that's free to all the different Massey students.
And Mitt and I will be in it this year, so.
We're going to be having a capstone launch assembly is going to be happening next Tuesday for the different junior class.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any committee reports that are not listed? Alan?
The curriculum. And one of the things that they talked about was doing a course revision for Introduction to Business Concepts and Technology. The cost is going to be zero, no cost to the district. And the reason they're changing it is because the original curriculum was developed in 2009 and it had a strong emphasis on keyboarding skills. Now that they're introducing keyboarding in elementary schools, they have a new emphasis that they developed for the course. And I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm going to call up a couple of people who were. Ian Lowell and Mark Schwartz are going to talk about a couple of new courses. Facing History and Ourselves and Finance and Investing.
You know what, they're later in the agenda, so do you want to, we'll skip it until we get to that?
Okay.
Anybody else have any committee reports? Thank you, Alan. All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. Anybody would like to address the board? All right, hearing none, we will move on to item number eight, which is Report of the Superintendent.
I've added in a few items that were not listed there, but let's start off with the fund statement. Gabby, if you would, please.
It's a little outdated because it's through the end of January and we're actually in the midst of preparing the end of February when we'll have the next meeting, excuse me. But just quickly, the food service RFP did go out on February 12th and we actually already had the first walkthrough. We had three companies come to the walkthrough, which I was pleasantly surprised at. The bids are due next Monday, so we'll see what actually happens. I'll let you know on Monday night. In terms of insurance, we're still trending somewhat positively. We ended January on a really high note, we have 1.9 million in the reserve, but we did have a pretty heavy month in February for claims. So just kind of keep that in the backseat of your heads as we continue through the year. As you know by this point, anybody who's, a lot of people have exhausted their HSAs, which means that the board is now fully paying. And also, I actually have a conference call on Thursday regarding procurement for energy pricing for '17, '18 fiscal year. Yeah, I know, it's a little scary to be thinking that far ahead, but it's kind of nice if we could actually get some decent pricing because we would then, you know, potentially be able to lock in and have, you know, decent numbers for the budget when it comes up. So that's pretty much where we're at right now.
Anybody have any questions for Gabby on that? All right. Thank you, Gabby.
As you know, the, from Week in Review, the state of Connecticut did contact us on the new accountability system from last year's test results. And Stepney Elementary was recognized as now a school of distinction. We finalized their sign to go in front of the Stepney Elementary School. And hopefully, within a couple of weeks, we'll have a sign that brings them the acclaim and congratulations that is due them. So that's just great news. We continue to do some really good things. You know, we, you know, we've been proponents of the Unified Sports Program for many years and now we're beginning to have conversations about migrating this to our Culinary Arts Program here at the high school in conjunction with the infamous now Coffee Cart, okay? So good things always come out of bad, I think, when you look deep enough. There's a silver lining in every cloud. As you know, the Coffee Cart was impacted because of our commitment to the nutritional standards that are before us. And so Peggy and Diaz here at the Culinary Arts Program has stepped up and said, what I'd like to do is maybe have the kids come down with their mentors and we can bake according to the nutrition standards and get those things back on the cart. So the cart has been up and operational, things are going very smoothly. Joe and his team and Mark are actually talking about potentially a course next year that would involve our special needs kids and their mentors in this unified culinary program. Really a great opportunity here in front of us. I was contacted a while back, I had heard rumors of it previously, but it was recent that I received a letter inviting the district to participate in the Connecticut State Employees Insurance Program called the Connecticut Partnership. Kevin Lembo, the letter came from Kevin Lembo, the state comptroller, inviting us to participate. The idea is that in the, if we take all of the Connecticut State Employees and all of the invited municipalities and boards of education, you know, that large mass of people in the same system would have clout and buying power, et cetera, and be able to, you know, negotiate good rates and that type of thing. We contacted, when we first became aware of it, we'd contacted our consultant, Ovations, Jay Fiorello, and he did a cost comparison for us that I put on your table in front of you. And in essence, if you look at the bottom of that page one, we would save, by going to the state system, we would save about thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. You have to commit for a three-year period of time and every year, it's a four and a half percent increase over that three-year period of time. So, you know, the basic understanding here is that this is not something that the Board of Education would probably enter into at this time because we're not even, you know, keeping, we've had years now where we've had zero percent increases. We've been doing very, very well with our HSA and with the, you know, our self-funding program. This is a PPO plan. And thirteen thousand dollars with the uncertainty of what happens year to year and what happens after the third year of commitment is a dicey proposition in my mind for us. Now, the town may find something like this of certain value because they were looking for a self-funded program or a way to save money and weren't in the same position as we are in regards to this. The problem that we would get into is if we ever committed to doing something like this, we would basically spend down our medical reserve fund, okay? Whatever claims came while the transition period happened, then those, that pool of money would disappear. And then, at the end of three years, if we decided that we wanted to get back to a self-funded program, you would have to have a huge commitment of about $2 million upfront in order to build your own again, okay? I, at this time, I don't see it as a viable option for us. However, if any board members want to pursue it further, we'd be more than happy to do that. But Jay's work here stands and it's, I'm fairly confident in the numbers that he provides.
Alan?
So we'd save thirteen thousand a year?
Yes.
Is what Jay was saying?
Yeah.
If we did switch over to the state, then we wouldn't have to pay Jay anymore, is that correct?
Actually, not. We'd still, we'd still have need for a consultant. And the reason for that is because you need those people for your negotiations and all of those other things that you do during a normal course of business. So, and that's about a sixty thousand dollar a year fee, isn't it, Gabby?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two thousand.
And we?
You know, on a thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand, around number savings on eight million dollars with a guaranteed increase of four and a half percent for the next three years.
So is that thirteen reflective of the first year or every year?
First year.
Just the first year?
Correct.
So the second year, it's going to cost us more?
More, correct. So it doesn't look like a viable option for us at this time. There are some districts in the state of Connecticut where this is a very viable option. You will hear of towns that are saving large amounts of money because they're either in a PPO already, okay? And this could be a little bit of the cheaper option, I'm thinking of Trumbull, right next door. The southern Fairfield County towns, close to New York, for instance, where you're paying doctors' fees for procedures and things, more reminiscent of New York fees. They're about forty percent higher than you'll find up in this part of the state and further north and east, okay? Away from New York City. They're finding incredible savings. What happens three years down the road when the state has to absorb that loss of them, you know, us, the state essentially buying their higher premium rates with no additional money coming in? So it could cause a skewing to happen down the road, that's what Jay's thinking is at this time. Tomorrow evening is the Board of Finance meeting with the Board of Education. Typically, we go, it's at 6:30. We did get a series of questions, about eighteen or nineteen questions. Nothing unusual in the questions, we responded to the Board of Finance and will be there tomorrow night, prepared to answer any additional questions that they might have. One concern that I have at this time, that I have not made public yet, is that our kindergarten numbers are coming in higher than expected. Remember last year, we cut that kindergarten section?
Yeah.
It looks to me like we're going to have to add a kindergarten section that we did not anticipate in this budget. So, you know, there's about sixty thousand dollars worth of probably a new teacher that I'm going to have to figure out a way to do it in the current budget that we have estimated. The numbers are just those borderline numbers. We have forty-three kids, for instance, at Monroe L here in February or early March, okay? And if I did two sections there, you'd have a twenty-one and a twenty-two. That's a little high, you know, we haven't had sections that high. At Fueng Hallow, there's about sixty-seven kids, I think. So that qualifies for sections. And at Stepney, we have sixty-three kids right now. So there again, you're at that borderline thing where I think I would rather err on having another teacher in there and making it work that way.
So are these numbers higher than what our enrollment study thought that they would be?
Yeah, they are slightly, yeah, slightly higher.
And if we're in March now, you know you're going to pick up between now and September 1st, so we could be
Absolutely.
Pretty, I don't want to say significant, but pretty high over what the enrollment study is saying, which is a good thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, that's what, that's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking here it is March, you know, we're bound to pick up, you know, six, seven, eight kids probably over the summer or more.
Well, that's a problem when enrollment studies are just a regression formula.
Yeah.
Can't predict the future.
Yeah. And then the last item that I have is that currently, now, we don't make this a firm date until our first meeting in April. The graduation right now is scheduled for June 14th. And we're hoping that we're done with winter, right?
Yes.
Maybe that will be the firm date, so.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Jim before we move on?
Yeah, so is eighth grade graduation June 13th?
Typically, it's the day before, so that's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
We can't make them firm by state statute until April, however, so, but right now, that's what we're tracking. And the commissioner is available that day to come and speak at graduation.
And what is that, Monday, Tuesday?
That's a Tuesday, I believe.
Wait for the high school?
For the high school.
And a Monday for?
Middle school, yeah.
Perfect, great. Anybody have any other questions before we move on? All right, we will move on then to presentations and we have Jack Zanri, who is going to do a presentation for Facilities and Operations and I'm assuming you need the?
Have you ever known Jack Zanri?
No.
So this is part of the ongoing professional development series for the Board of Ed and this is an overview of what goes on with Facilities and Operations. Firstly, I want to grab this model. It's not so much about facilities, but it's a picture, it's developed by a researcher at Harvard named Richard Elmore. He's really one of the biggest researchers in education. And he created this to show pictorially what goes on in schools. If you look at the center, that orange circle there, I'm going to expand it in just a minute. There's the student, there's teacher and content. He refers to that as the instructional core. That's the most important part of what goes on in schools. Reason why I show this to you is that in Facilities and Operations, there's a lot of facets that are impacted by this department and the work that we do. It impacts the environment, there's a lot of resources that are involved, a number of systems, structures, a lot of stakeholders who are collaborators with us. And when things are going really well in this department, what happens is we're invisible. You know, it's about creating a place that's great to work for people and students to come and do what they need to do without the interference of things and facilities not being clean or things broken. So really, the department takes great pride in being invisible. And I think as you go through this presentation tonight, you'll see some of the reasons why, you know, you might not see the good work that these people do every day, but there's a lot of great things that go on. We manage over a half million square feet of facilities in the Monroe Public Schools. That's a lot of square feet that we have within all these buildings. So every day of the week, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand square feet are what's managed and touched by every single one of the staff in this department. The land is also managed by us. The Board of Ed has 162 acres of land. One of the peculiarities right now is Chalk Hill, while the building is managed by the town of Monroe, the actual grounds are managed by the BOE. Plowing is done by our staff and then also the maintenance of the grounds is done by our staff as well. The mowing contracts that we handle also include Chalk Hill. So just so you know, that is part of our scope of responsibilities in what we do every day in this district. We have 3,723 people come through these schools every single day. It's amazing how much use these buildings get. There's the instructional day when we have all of our students and staff come through. But the other thing that happens is nighttime, there's quite a lot that goes on. Come up to Massey at night, you always see a parking lot filled with cars. And again, that's part of what this department manages and maintains so that these buildings are good for use, not only for students and staff, but also for our whole community. The other thing that we look at is the cleaning ratio, that is, the number of staff that we have to the amount of square feet for every single building. And the way that this works is there's the square feet per building, there's the first shift staff. These are the people who work during the day. These are typically our head custodians. So for example, at the elementary level, they're on during the day, they're managing the building, making sure that everything's operational, running well, dealing with the heating systems, some cleaning, cafeteria, they're dealing with all those things. The second shift is what we look at for the ratio of cleaning because these are the folks who come through and clean the entire building when the, when the facilities aren't in use during the day. So when we take the square footage, divide that by second shift, those are the ratios that we see here. We try to keep them as even as we possibly can, within reason. The buildings are all a little bit different, so there's some things we need to factor in. You'll notice the high school's a little bit different. And the reason why that is, is at the high school level, our daytime staff manage all of these grounds. All the athletics, all the athletic equipment, we do all of our own mowing here, whereas at other buildings, it is subcontracted out. So during the daytime shift, there's a lot that goes on in preparing the exterior of the building as well as keeping things up and going in this very large facility. The other facet is night use at Massey far exceeds night use in any other building. So as a result, you'll notice that there's a difference there. It's for a reason, it's because of the nature of the use within this facility. We work with a lot of different people. In the various projects that go on, we're always working with our internal staff, whether it be administration, teachers, career professionals. We work directly with boards and commissions, whether it be planning and zoning, inland wetlands, depending on the scope of the project. We work with the Health Department on a regular basis on a number of things that we do, whether it be plumbing, whether it be looking how our cleaning practices are. We've got a great relationship with a lot of different departments and it's critical for the work that we do. Communication is a really big part of what goes on. As one example, when we deal with oil tank replacements, we deal with land use, we deal with engineers, we deal with the vendor, the contractors, there's a lot of different players that have to be involved, not to mention the school staff as well. So there's a lot of coordination that goes on in each one of the various projects that we take on throughout the course of the year. The interesting thing about our staff is The interesting thing about our staff is our custodial staff has a lot of talents within it. We have one licensed electrician, that is his full-time hired job, but then all these positions, all these certifications you see listed underneath are certifications that come with our custodial staff. We have a licensed plumber on staff, which is a great bonus for us. He does help us out with a lot of our plumbing needs across district. We have a number of landscapers on staff, there are custodians, we have a number of mechanics. When we've had some of our equipment fail, they've swapped out motors for us right here rather than farming it out to somebody else to do the work, which has saved us a lot of money. Similarly, we have a number of really good carpenters who have done finished casework, framing. There are times in the summertime, we've added dividing walls in various facilities. We've done that in-house, again, saving us a lot of money, but we don't have to farm it out. We have some really good painters on staff that get these places looking really good. We also have a number of heavy equipment operators, again, saving us a lot of money, where we'll rent equipment, whether it be a backhoe, an excavator, skid loader, and our own people will operate it, again, saving us a considerable amount of money rather than having to farm it out. And we also have a custodian who's a very good artist, and we've deployed him with, if you ever get a chance, to take a look at the granite sign at the second entrance to Massey. There's black letters there. He went over there and he painted in the black letters there, did a really nice job. We didn't have to hire a sign company to take care of it. He's really got some great skills as a true artist, and it's come in handy for some of the things that we do internally. We also, this piggybacks on some of what John was mentioning in his last presentation, our staff, if you look at a budget for a school district, staffing is roughly eighty percent of our total budget, give or take, give or take. We're all people, so the quality of, you know, what we invest into our people is a big deal. It's our greatest investment, and we need to continue to invest into that investment so it yields returns for the employees and all of us. So we do a lot of ongoing training with all of our facility staff. John just did a presentation today on human resources, monitoring attendance software, head custodians overviewing attendance software for their custodians that they deal with during the day. We've had the Health Department come in and work directly with our custodians, talking specifically about cleaning strategies. We've done this specifically around, you know, the what-ifs of, if you recall, the H1N1 outbreak. We prepare for those kinds of things when the outbreak's not happening. So the Health Department came in, they talked to us, when you have this kind of outbreak, here are the strategies you need to do to ensure that the building is safe. So we look to try to do those things proactively. Similarly, we've met with the insurance company to avoid injuries, and we've worked with other vendors so that we keep our staff current with latest practices. Another big part of what goes on, as mentioned before, is, I won't bore you by reading, this is a partial list of all the outside organizations that use our facilities, both indoors and outdoors. And again, these are community facilities. They get great use, three thousand seven hundred people during the day, but there are thousands of people that come through these buildings every single night and every single weekend, year-round. And our maintenance staff plays a key role in ensuring that this is a safe and welcoming environment for all the community members that come here to use these facilities. And then lastly, just a little bit about some of the projects that are going on or go on year to year. As you know, we've had roof replacements, we had Honeywell not too long ago. We have an oil tank replacement this summer at Stepney Elementary. We're working with engineers right now to create specifications for that. We have the security system work that went on in past years. And then always, we have heating, electrical, NAC repairs, always throughout the year. So we're always working on those things with vendors and internal staff to make that work well. And hopefully after tomorrow, the other thing we'll be looking at is a busy summer with a turf project. Gabby and I were talking about that before. When those things come online, our summers get really, really full. And it's a good thing. It's exciting to have those kinds of things going on within our Board of Ed facilities. So that's an overview for you, unless you have some questions at all.
Anybody have questions?
Thank you for doing such a great job.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
My pleasure.
All right, we will move on. We have no old business. Now we'll move on to new business, and we will do the curriculum proposals. So if you guys would like to come up, Mark, Ian.
So last month, we sat with the Curriculum Committee to talk about a new course in the CTE Department on the Business side of CTE called Finance and Investing. And that is a second-level finance course that's offered to students with the first level being personal finance. In personal finance, students learn about things like just understanding basics about money, taxes, budgets, investing, and some other topics in finance. But more on the personal level. Last spring, the CTE Department, you may know, went through an audit from the State Department of Education, and they were very impressed with the teachers, and they actually recommended that we consider installing a second-level finance course. And that's kind of in the spirit of the educational reforms that are going on. They really want to push students' understandings of finance. And they felt like we had a good first level, and that would be sufficient if this ever becomes a requirement for graduation. But they also thought that our staff would be capable of doing a second level. And they encouraged us very strongly to apply for a $20,000 grant to pay for this. So we did that, and they awarded us that full amount of money. So, you know, we put a proposal together, and it was accepted unanimously last month by the Curriculum Committee. There is a great deal of interest in this topic at Massey. We've surveyed the students, and they oftentimes come back and say this is something they would like even more of. We've run as many as six sections of this class, personal finance, so I think there's definitely a level of interest with the students. So our teacher, Janelle De Setti, has really a strong background in finance, and I think she would be the one to develop the curriculum and is looking forward to your blessing from the end of that. And it's free, so, because it's all of the curriculum writing hours would be paid for by the state, as well as the tests and professional development that would go along with that. So, but if you have any questions, I would happily try to answer. Did I tell you what some of the topics, more in-depth topics, are in this class? Obviously, banking, goods and services, risk management, credit, credit reporting, retirement savings, you know, even students as young as high school students, that's something worth them considering. Business ownership, real estate, employer, employee relationships, and the like. So, a very in-depth survey course.
Would this be for 2016, '17?
We're hoping to get this approved so that she can begin writing it, and it's presently listed, and it's something that students are signing up for with the asterisks in the program of studies with Board of Education approval. We intend to run this in the fall.
Amen.
Was this intended as a college prep course, honors course, or not listed, not weighted?
All of the classes in, on the Business side of the CTE Department are unweighted, so it's not intended as an honors-level course or a college prep course. The grade in the course, it's for credit, but an A doesn't necessarily help your GPA and an F in the course, not that anybody would be taking an F in this course, I'm sure, but it wouldn't hurt your GPA. It's an unweighted course, as are all of the Business courses.
Anybody else have any questions about this?
This is great. I know I've, when I've worked in front of the district, yeah, I mean, this is very much related to some of the topics that you mentioned are agreed to hear that that's going to be offered, especially credit reporting.
Yeah, it's something that a lot of, it's a mystery for a lot of our students, and as they go off into the world, I think it's a really important topic for them, so, very much.
Absolutely. I have a child who took personal finance last year, and it would be a great continuation because, I'm telling you, personal finance, the first-level course, should be a requirement for every student because of the stuff that's covered in there.
Right.
You know, balancing checkbooks, things that they really need to learn how to do that, and I think it's kind of shocking.
In some schools, it is a graduation requirement, but that is really one of the classes that's in the forefront of the educational reform that I believe will become-
Yeah.
-a requirement.
Ellie, did you have a question?
Well, I was just going to say, in math class this year, we did an H&R Budget Challenge, where you like, you get a salary, you learn how to pay your taxes, it's just a challenge that you do online, and like, that's the first I've ever seen of anything in that sort of situation. So like, I may know how to do all the things we learned in school, but I think it's like good to learn how to manage your finances and everything.
Yeah. Great. Anybody else have anything? I think this is a great addition to our curriculum up at Massey. All right, you want to move on to the new course, Facing History in Ourselves?
Sure. So my name is Ian Lowell. We study in our history courses, we study a lot of kind of depressing topics sometimes, you know, war and conflict and genocide and destruction. And one of the, I guess, even more depressing pieces of that is that these are all human-made conflicts. These are all the results of human choices and decisions. And understanding how those events come to pass is a question worthy of study. And the Facing History in Ourselves course really seeks to identify, what is it about human behavior that tends to separate people into we groups and they groups? And what are the consequences of separating ourselves into these groups? Instead of seeing our common and shared humanity, but seeing the differences that separate us. And so, the Facing History in Ourselves course is a combination of psychology and the study of human behavior and poignant moments in history where that human behavior can be studied. Moments like the Holocaust, for instance, or the Civil Rights Movement in the United States, as another example. You can think of, in either of those cases, the groups of we and the groups of they and the consequences that result from that. Really identifies three major groups of perpetrators of crimes, those who are bystanders, and those who, they coined the phrase, upstanders, people that resist the perpetrators of these crimes. And so, the course really kind of seeks to take a look at those particular moments in history, understand why they've happened, and of course, the obvious result is, how can we prevent them from happening in the future? So it's an in-depth course, it's kind of a unique course, it's going to be an elective to juniors and seniors, meshing history and psychology together.
Okay. Do we have any questions on that? Sounds very interesting. Great. You sound like two great additions to our curriculum, both of them.
It is also free, too.
Is it for free?
I feel impelled to let you guys go there, too. It's a national organization that has a lot of, all of their material is online and free.
Great, we like free.
Even better.
Even better. Improve our curriculum and it'd be free. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We will take our formal vote on this to next meeting. So, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to do a presentation?
At that duty.
All right, we're going, moving on to Jim's presentation on ALICE, we'll call it.
On President's Day this year, and if you remember President's Day, the icy day right after it, remember that, that day? Jack Zamri, myself, and Nicole Buckley attended an ALICE training down in Shelton. There were fifty law enforcement and educators together, being trained to be trainers in this response to violent intruders in our schools. I think that you know us well enough to know that we're very proud of the security work that we've done in Monroe Public Schools over the years. I think we have been at the forefront and in a leadership position. In fact, we have somebody from another school district coming tomorrow just to take a look at our Sally ports and how we've constructed them and made our buildings as safe as they are. ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate, and it is a new twist on how to respond to a violent intruder into your building. It was very detailed training, like I say, for two days. We actually ran simulations on the second day with plastic bullets and everything. It was an eye-opener for me. The basic premise of ALICE is simply this. If I say the word first responder to you, you get an image in your mind's eye, probably, that it's a police officer, it's a fireman, it's medical emergency personnel, something of that nature. One of the things they teach in the training, however, is that the average national response time to a violent intruder is five to six or seven minutes, the average nationally. The average length of time that the intruder is active is four and a half minutes. And so that means that the first responders truly are not necessarily the police and the fire and the emergency personnel, it's us. We're the first responders because we're there on-site. And the whole concept kind of puts you, makes you step back and think about that for a second. If I show you, one of the more disturbing moments in the training was listening to the 911 call that came from Columbine High School back in April 20th of 1999. And the call is being, that you're listening to, I'm not going to play it for you, it's too disturbing. You're free to, I'll give you the link anytime you would like it. But it was a substitute teacher in the media center. And the substitute teacher got 911 on the call online and said that they, you know, she could hear gunshots, you could actually hear them in the background. She was describing where one of the intruders was, right outside the media center door. She would periodically, you know, shout to the kids, get down, get under something, you know, hide, that kind of thing. Very disturbing, and the tone, you can sense the emotion and the panic in her tone throughout all of that. And unfortunately, at that time and place, twenty-two students were either killed or wounded in that library media center. What we learn in the training is that she did everything right. She did everything right. That's exactly what she was trained to do, get the kids undercover, out of sight. The trainers at ALICE call that hide and hope today, okay? What you don't, what we know today is that within a very short distance in that media center, is in some cases as little as thirty feet, everybody could escape through a back door. And so it isn't enough to rely on hide and hope anymore, okay? We have to take actions. We have to take actions in the form of barricading doors. We know that these intruders shoot, about every four seconds, a shot goes off. So every second that we postpone that, okay, that we delay that, we save lives. And so it's not enough just to close your door and hide under the desk like the, remember the thermonuclear things that we drilled for when we were kids, hiding under our desks, right, as if that was going to stop something? We can't rely on that anymore. We have to look at every room that we're in with a new vision of what can we do additionally to make it safer, to slow this person down until help gets here, okay? And that's barricading the door with whatever we can barricade. In the second day, when we went through the scenarios, we actually went through four different scenarios, and we rotated, there were fifty people in the training, we were broken into groups of four, and we rotated from one room to another. It took most of the afternoon to go through these simulations. And I was amazed about the opportunities that existed and the problems that existed in each of the rooms that we were in. And how you walk into a room and you really need to look at it and say, is there a way out of here? What can I use to barricade the door? What can I do? And if the door is breached, what can we do again to slow the intruder down, okay? One of the things we can do is start making very loud noises and throwing things, okay? We have something innately that we do, every time we go to do something, it's called an UDA loop. We have to orient. If I want to go for this pointer right now, in order for me to reach for that, the first thing I have to do is orient to it. for that, the first thing I have to do is orient to it, make a decision to take action, okay, and then do the action. If somebody's throwing something at me, and I go to do that, I'm going to be distracted, and I have to start the UDA loop all over again, okay? And if I'm distracted again, I have to reorient myself again. Every second makes a huge difference. I think the most profound thing that I learned in this training is that, I was a new administrator when this happened, when Columbine happened, and ever since then, I've been running lockdown drills, and checking doors, and making plans, and doing all of those things, but I had never locked down myself. Imagine that. I had never locked down. I felt very peculiar in those lockdown situations. I didn't know what was going on, I didn't know if it was good to bolt out the back door, I didn't know what to expect, I didn't know what was happening, no information was coming my way. And that was a really profound learning for me, that we need to, we need to practice more of these situational responses to a violent intruder into our building. What I didn't show you here, I'm sorry, when we were talking about the 9/11 call, is, you know, all of the killing and injuring happened here. There was a back door to the library right here, and then you could see it, at least, outside, over here. Intruder came in over here. It would have been so simple had we known and taken evasive action. So, that's what ALICE is all about. ALICE is about alerting, in that it doesn't have to be just the principle that makes the alert. We should train people to be alerters around the building. We should lock down, we should communicate as best we can and inform, but we should take countermeasures that are situational in nature and grade-level appropriate, okay? At all costs, and make sure that we're doing everything we can. And if we can evacuate out of the situation, it's the best thing to do, okay? We, like I say, this profoundly affected me, I know it did Jack and Nicole as well, and we have a Safety and Security Committee here in the district, and it is our intent now to go and talk to them at their next meeting, and actually set up training, probably through the summer, for these folks, because we have a big task ahead of us. We've built a paradigm of locking down and hiding and waiting. It's going to take a lot to undo that, to start an action program, you know, barricade the door, throw things, evacuate if we can, and that, and it's going to take us some time, it'll probably take us a year to do, to get everybody kind of trained and looking at things differently, but that is, that's where we're going, and if anybody would like to be involved in that process along the way, we're more than willing to have you come to the Safety and Security Meeting and see firsthand what it all looks like. Any questions? We may, we may even host an ALICE training here in the district, and have the trainers that trained us come back. I know that the Police Department would like to see the SROs involved more fully in this, and so we've been having conversations with PD, and we know that it's so hard to get into these trainings, they don't happen locally all that much, that we might be able to offset some of the costs of training by bringing in outsiders from other districts as well. So, that's our intent going forward.
Great, thank you. All right, does anybody have anything else before we move on to Item 12, which is our Board of Ed self-evaluation, where we're planning on going into executive session? Oh, yes, John, do you want to talk about the Da Vinci Festival?
Yeah, just one, I put a card in your place, the cards were mailed out today to all the homes in Monroe. So our third annual Da Vinci Festival will be April 1st and 2nd. It will be downstairs, and actually throughout the building, so I encourage everyone that can come to come, it's a great event.
And just a reminder that tomorrow is the vote at the Senior Center for the turf field, and it's a paper ballot, just at the Senior Center.
Great, do I have a motion to go into executive session for the board evaluation, self-evaluation, excuse me?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Thank you. I have a motion and a second, that the board go into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the self-evaluation. All in favor? May I thank you, we're in executive session, no action will be taken after this executive session, and we will just adjourn from that.